All right. I hope everyone's doing well. I've got 4:31. Today's Monday, February the 26th. And we got extra copies of the agenda. Where they all get taken?
Yes, I put them.
Okay. We do have extra copies of our agenda on the podium if you'd like to have one. We have those readily available. I know we have a large crowd tonight, but it's at this afternoon. But please silence all of your cell phones. Be courteous of the large amount of folks we have here. So here we go. And there's, tonight, let me share this with you. We've got several items on the agenda. And a lot of it may seem redundant. But please realize there are certain ways that our meetings have to be conducted to meet certain state law criteria. So bear with me. Just if I look at you and ask for your joke, ask a joke from the audience, you'll understand why, because certain things we have to go by. We need to, we have a certain criteria that we try to abide by here at the county. All right, here we go. All right. Today is a work session and combined work called meeting for the Board of Commissioners. Again, to reiterate, it today being Monday, February 26th. I hereby call this meeting in order. If you would, please rise if we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Usually at this time, we have a representative of the ministerial alliance do her invocation, but to my understanding, it was scheduling conflict. And he was unable to be here. Pastor Michael, if you don't mind where you are, would you bless these proceedings?
Absolutely. Let's pray together. Father, what an honor to come and to gather in a place like this, knowing that the business of the county is done and the men that are here and the folks that are gathered here in this place. And we're grateful that you're not locked in a box anywhere. But Lord, you're here with us even now. And we are thankful for that. We ask you, Lord, to give wisdom to our county commissioners and all those that would have a part. All those that will be presenting things tonight, give them wisdom. We pray everything will be done in order. And I just pray, Father, your hand and your favor. But Father, we pray for our county and for our nation. Father, we need your divine touch upon us. And we're so grateful that our hope is found in none other than the Lord Jesus Christ and us placing our faith and trust in him. Lord, that knowing him as our personal Savior and him alone can take us to heaven through the forgiveness of sin. And we're so grateful for that hope today. And we thank you to live in this great county. And we pray your hand of favor and blessing continue in this place. And we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Moving on in our agenda. Item four. Consider approval of minutes of the January 29th work session and called meeting, as well as the February 22nd called meeting. There was an addendum that went out earlier today. Gentlemen, I hope you've had an opportunity to read, review the minutes with the addendums earlier today. It's going to have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Gentlemen.
Mr. Bryant, first.
I say.
Mr. Goodyer, second. End of discussion. Have done all favor of the motion, speaking by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Moving on to item five. Sheriff Neil Walden presented request for compensation adjustments to sheriff's office and the county's general employees. Sheriff Walden.
I'm going to let Chief Ingram, after you work, and I will summarize what he brings forward.
Thank you. I'd like to just recap for a minute and say, two weeks ago, Sheriff Walden and I prepared a letter together that we presented to each commissioner individually and discussed at that time with you, the crisis, the dilemma that we are facing in law enforcement in White County. And I want to take just five minutes, if I could, to read that letter. On behalf of the sheriff, I have the distinct privilege of serving White County for 40 years, 25-plus years as your sheriff. During my tenure, I witnessed many changes to include a need for more and better service in an ever-changing needs of our community. What we do has become more complex, difficult, and demanding every day. We are aware that law enforcement has been placed under microscope, examining everything we do with a critical eye. We have made enormous strides at the sheriff's office to hire, train, and retain the best employees in Georgia. The task continues to become more daunting with a shrinking applicant pool, serious problems with retention, and finally, a very inexperienced workforce. We are preparing for the future. And recruitment and retention are the number-one priority of this office. Jobs and salaries have become competitive. We have simply not kept up in White County. I want to thank you first for recognizing our employees over five years of experience in 2016 with a 5% pay raise, well deserved. That represented 29 employees out of our 80 employees, 50 who did not receive that raise. This was a one-time, not continuous. Most recently, in 2018, county employees received a 2.5% pay increase across the board. Detention received 33 cents an hour and deputies 38 cents an hour. Again, thank you. We at White County Sheriff's Office are committed to good stewardship, a philosophy of servant leadership. That's based on Sheriff Walden. Providing the best service on every call and every citizen contact. As you are aware, we're currently state-certified and we've been recertified, which means we conduct our business professionally, following policies and procedures and time-proven standards. We take our job very serious and the public trust as well. My purpose in writing this letter is to advise you of an impending crisis in White County law enforcement that is very real. The applicant pool continues to shrink. Qualified applicants simply do not want to come to work for 13, 24 an hour in the jail. A detention officer is placed in a dangerous setting immediately when he comes to work. He supervises inmates with a ratio of one officer to 25 inmates. Additionally, you're required to work in the jail for approximately two years of good service before you're eligible to become a deputy. The starting pay for deputy sheriff in White County is $15.35 an hour. Additionally, we do not compensate new employees for advanced education, training, and experience. It's simply not a budget item. The future requires we do this to attract talent and, most important, retain it. Many of our surrounding agencies have provided, do provide salary adjustment for additional qualifications and skills. A survey we did as of today currently pays Lumpkin County, 1601, Gatesville, P.D., 1831, Banks County, 1832, Hall County, 1856, and Forsyth County, $20.10 an hour, starting, with adjustments, with adjustments for extra qualifications. These sheriff officers, they are competitors. We struggle to find employees out of this very small qualified applicant pool. We strive in White County to create a healthy climate and environment to work in with good leadership and management for both people and resources. We handle all calls for service, citizen contacts professionally, timely, and results-focused. I say this to tell the people, tell you people that want to work here in White County and live here in White County, we reached a point where our employees cannot pay their bills on the salary they make. They said they want to be here, but they just can't stay. Everyone understands what inflation has done to the cost of women. I want to see the White County Sheriff's Office continue to recruit and retain competent, good public servants. I want to see our county recognize our employees and pay them what they deserve. Simply stated, we are not paying our people enough for the job they do. We are blessed to have good men and women of talent, dedication, commitment, who love what they do. They give the community their best every single day. We should give them a salary they deserve and have earned. It is difficult to put a value on experienced job knowledge and talent. These men and women run toward work in danger every day. We are now in a critical state. Our employees need and are asking for your help with appropriate compensation. I respectfully ask the commission to consider a $2 per hour pay increase for our 80 employees, which would represent $349,000 in court. $349,000, $349,000 annual budget adjustment. And your consideration is appreciated. I want to conclude with a few highlights. Most recently, as of today, we have two employees down at our jail with no applications on file, zero. We have three openings at patrol with no applications on file, zero. That means as of today, we are five employees out of 80 vacant. Additionally, I have the names of three employees, which would bring the total to eight, who are going through the applicant process elsewhere. We assert in that because we've been contacted and said, "May we, may we view their personnel files?" So those applications are in progress, pending. And we hope we won't, but we strongly suspect we will lose three more for eight employees vacant. Eight employees vacant with a workforce of 80 represents 10% of our workforce. I use the word, and the sheriff uses this word carefully when we say critical. Public safety is the number-one, most important thing in any community, being safe. I say that because my sons were raised here. We moved here. They went to school here. They graduated from here. And they've gone on to be, in my estimation, successful. And I owe that to White County. I've lived here 18 years. As you know, I'm a former GBI agent who came to work for the sheriff's office. And I love it here. I love the people. I love the community. And most importantly, the reason I moved here was to be safe and secure. I am one of them. We are gaining more and more in experience. That's not a good thing. This trend, if it were to continue, we would be decimated. And we can't put a value on experience, job knowledge, and talent. And we've got to retain people for this reason. Because the five-to-15-year employee that we almost have not off, that we have not been able to capture and hang on to, that's your supervisors, that's your field training officers, that's your investigators, that's your people who we call when we have a major crisis in White County. And we've got to have that. And we've got to recruit them. And we've got to somehow find a way to retain them. We hope that you will support this in an effort to keep the people here in White County. You've got really, really good people. And I'd hate to see us lose any more.
I'll be brief. Bob pretty much covered everything that we talked about now. We've talked about this issue three or four times in the past two weeks, as well as for several months, we've talked about it. We are at a point in law enforcement here in this county, and it's getting critical. If we don't get some, something I can offer someone to give them some incentive to stay here, I don't know what you're going to do. Your services as far as law enforcement is going to go, it's going to go down. We'll probably wind up taking a number and wait until we get there. And I say that a little facetiously, but it's, in my opinion, it is getting to that point. I mean, as the chief said, we, what, 40, 50% of our staff has less than 40 years' experience?
70%.
70%. And two years of that was spent in the jail. So we're looking at officers out here that don't have the experience that he and I and some of this command staff has here. It's keeping these younger guys focused on what needs to be done out there. Got a great crew. They're young, got a great crew. But they just don't have that street experience that the older folks has got. And some of the older folks are the ones that's going to walk off and leave here if they don't retire. So again, guys, we're in a, we're in a position where whatever y'all decide today is going to set a tone for future law enforcement in this county. I mean, we're talking $2 an hour. And that sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money. But I'm willing to pay my fair share, or more than my fair share, to know that I have got law enforcement protection in this county, to know my kids are protected, to know my grandkids are protected. So I can stand here and ramble on and on and on. Other than the monies it's costing us to train these folks, I'm going to give you an example of the training. Just got three back out of the academy in '17. And it costs me, or costs the taxpayers of this county a little less than $9,000 to send these folks to school for 11 weeks. Yes, they can leave anytime they want. But there's a statute that says they got, the receiving agency has to reimburse me for that money. And guess what? The receiving agency is making money. So they don't have to sit there getting a certified cop put on the street and don't have to worry about it. So it is critical. I'm not going to beat this thing to death. Y'all know where I stand, how I feel. I've told you a hundred times. When I went to work, when I was elected sheriff in this county, I'll give you a little comparison. A deputy sheriff, which I was, was making, I was making $7, I think $7, $10 an hour. And that was 40, 40 years ago, almost. So you can see that it hasn't grown a whole lot to $15 an hour based on what we're living in, the times we're living in, and the cost we're having to stick out every day for the services we got and meetings these folks have with their checks they carry home. So I'm going to leave you with that. It's in your hands.
Sheriff, thank you. And to kind of reiterate something I said back on January the 29th. I know you heard me. Yeah, one of the challenges that we have, and I'm going to just not refer to your department. We've got some other departments in the county that are receiving some same challenges where they're being pulled. And I know that's not why you're here.
Oh, sure.
Let me finish, let Sheriff, Sheriff, Sheriff. Sheriff, let me finish. I was talking, sir. Let me finish, please. Sheriff, come on, I'm going to. Now, that's being disrespectful, Sheriff.
I'm not being disrespectful. I understand the laws of the media. The analogy you're making there, these folks you're talking about, they're not running through this danger out here every day by no means.
No, sir. I did not infer that. I think everyone in the audience did not infer that either. We have a situation in our 911 department that's losing employees as well. This board, as I said a few weeks ago, has got to take a stand and do a better job, not only in retaining, but recruiting employees. That's where I was trying to go with that in a very respectful manner, sir. Okay?
I meant, I didn't mean any disrespect either. The analogies are different than what I'm hearing.
Not sure, but thank you.
Think about it.
Any other comments at this time, gentlemen? All right. Sheriff, without, since I'm one of five, unfortunately, I can't give you a timeframe about this second, but what I'm seeing at this moment. But I feel confident this board is going to take a step forward and take a step of leadership very soon to address the issues that you have presented to us.
Is that going to be something you're going to do in executive session or second meeting?
We can't vote on a compensation item in an executive session.
You'd vote on it in this one?
Yes, sir, we could.
All right. Aye, Bobby.
I understand. Any, any motion made by the board would have to come out of the executive session if we were to do so. I will, I will make that as a form of reference for the record, please. All right. Item six. Conduct a public hearing for land use application filed by Center Baptist Church Incorporated for a property located at 109 Elrod Road, Helen, Georgia, 30528, to request a conditional use permit to expand a non-conforming use per code section, Article 9, Section 1002, Conditional Use 1, tax map and parcel H02E-048. Total acreage, 4.38 acres. Present use is R1 residential, single-family use. Folks, how these public hearings will be conducted is I will ask our staff, in particular, our Economic Development Director, John Sell, will give a brief summary of the request. And then there will be a representative from the applicant. And I've got three of these to conduct tonight. So I'll ask a representative of the application to give their summary of what's going on. And then the board will have an opportunity to ask any questions of the, of the applicant. And then I'll go into the public hearing section. This is where I referred to a little while ago. It gets a little redundant. But I'll ask for a, from the floor, if there's anyone here in support of the application. I'll issue three calls. And then after those three calls are over, I'll issue three calls if there's anyone who is here in opposition or perhaps have concerns on the application. Then I'll close that. And then at that time, I will move into the section requesting what the board's wishes could be at that time. So, Mr. Sell, you have the floor.
Okay. As you stated, this is an application by the Center Baptist Church for property located at 109 Elrod Road, Helen, Georgia, 30545, to request a conditional use permit to expand non-conforming uses per code section, Article 10, Section 1002, Conditional Use 1, tax map and parcel is H02E-048. Total acreage is 4.3 acres. Present use is R1 residential, single-family. As I understand it, this is not the traditional church property. This is an existing building on another piece of property that the church owns that they're going to expand in order to use for their worship service. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this. There were comments submitted. But the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval for the conditional use of this property for the church to expand. Mr. Mark Turner is here for the church. And you also received a fax, I believe, today from a comment from a member of the Joiny Property Union. So you have that for your reference. And I'll let Mr. Turner talk.
Mr. Turner, will you come down and represent the church? And for the record, Mr. Turner is not my brother Mark Turner. There are a few Mark Turners in, in the county. In case something were to come up, I do want to make that a point of reference. So, Mr. Turner?
Well, for the record, my full name is Carey, C-A-R-Y, Mark Turner. I am known by most people in this county as Mark Turner, so with that. You know, we come before this board of commissioners for question. This change solely so we can expand our church. Our church has served that community since 1913. And we have finally, over a period of years, acquired property that's probably less than 100 yards from where our existing church is today. And we're now at a membership level that we require board space. And so we, at this time, would, would ask this board commissioners to approve that change in the zoning so we could proceed, you know, with our plans as far as expanding our facilities to meet the needs, current needs of our membership, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Turner at this time, gentlemen? Okay. All right. Well, at this time, we'll officially start our public hearing section. Again, without going through all of the same criteria, if you have a comment you'd like to make in support of the church's request, please raise your hand and I'll get to you as quickly as I can. If you'll come to the podium, I need to get your name and address for the record, please. Our clerk has to get that. It's, it's a formality we have to go by. So if you would, raise your hand and I'll get to you. Those in support of the request. Yes, Mr. Biggers? Or you want to say something?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I want to ask y'all a question. I hope you can hear me. The others didn't seem to want to talk on this thing. I don't either. But nevertheless, Tom Bell Road over there, several years it has been designed to be resurfaced. And I don't know why it hasn't been. But I would like to see that done before it goes back into a gravel road. And I want to ask you, is there possibility that might be done this year?
Well, Mr. Biggers, this is a public hearing for the, for the church's request for rezoning.
Okay. I understand that.
So this is not that section of meeting yet.
Okay.
I understand, and out of respect, what I want to do is,
Okay.
Can we get to that at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
All right. If that's okay with you?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. If there's anyone who'd like, make any comments in support of the church's request, please raise your hand and I'll get to you as quickly as I can. All right. I've issued the first call. I've issued the first call. And what I say this, it's not uncommon to not have any comments. I don't want you, anyone to sit here and think, you know, what's going on? This is not uncommon. So it's all right. All right, second call. All right, third call, going once, going twice. All right. Ms. Shanda, will you mark the record that we issued three calls for those in support of the, of the request? And I hereby am closing that section. Now, we're going to open the floor up for anyone who has concerns regarding Now, we're going to open the floor up for anyone who has concerns regarding the request. And again, if you'll give your name and your address for the record, we've got to get that on. So, raise your hand, and I'll get to you as quickly as possible. Yes, ma'am? If you don't mind, so the rest of the everybody can hear that. Thank you.
Well, my name is Barbara Hollis. My address is 2260 Skylake Road, Salt E. McKeach, 30571. The land that the church has acquired, I believe, is .99 acres, and it's below the one acre that is regulation that is required to put a building on. There is a driveway that is part of the church's property and part of the carpenter's property, which would be adjacent to the 200 parking lot, car parking lot, that the church would like to build on their property. The request is for them not to use part of the driveway that is owned by the Brett and Jeffrey Carpenter of 56... They're with me. 56 Summit Way, I believe it is. Okay, there you go. We are concerned about the heavy equipment vehicles going down this black driveway in front of 56 Summit Way. As you come out the front door of the home, here is this driveway. And it's only a one lane. Two vehicles could not be down it at the same time. Of course, I think they were in back of each other. But it's going to be heavy equipment vehicles and church access for their three services on Sunday and their Wednesday night, the church supper that they have, and it would be for the parishioners. So, our concern, the carpenter's concern, is with the usage of that road for their purposes. According to the Roads Department, the correct road for them to use for their building would be Mountain Berry Road. And that's according to the County Road Department to access their parcel of land, which is a residential .99 acreage.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Hollis? Where you finished, I apologize. Were you finished?
I didn't know if you had any questions for me.
Ma'am, just for clarification, you don't live in that house that's in question on Summit, correct? And neither does the owner of the house, correct?
No, I'm not sure. There are three rental cabins, and the carpenters own the one that would be adjacent to where the parking lot...
There's one right behind the, or the two. So, pretty much, if I'm understanding you right, Ms. Carpenter's rather than to go in front of the other two with a mirror stretch closer to the house and use the one that they've been using for 400 years, if my understanding is standing correct.
I don't know what the church has been using...
Well, moreover, fact, the church has used it, you know, up and down. The people at Trent there evidently have been using it. I know there was an issue here back a few months ago, and I'm not here to dog you. I'm just questioning, you know. So, you know, you're representing them.
Yes.
So, I just wondered, the rental people have been using it. The church has been using it for Sunday School anyway. So, there's never been an issue till now. So, I just wonder why all of a sudden the concern?
The concern is about the heavy equipment, the number of vehicles that would be going up and down it. It is basically a blacktop driveway.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay, good. So, what it would do would put an undue hardship on the cabins with all of this activity because, like I said, they are all rental properties, and people will start putting bad reviews because there would be no privacy.
Now, for clarification, Summit is a private road, correct?
Summit?
Is that correct?
Summit Road is a dirt... Yes, it is a dirt and gravel road.
Okay, all right. Summit is a private road, non-county maintained.
That is correct.
All right. And there's other access points other than the roads you referred, correct? So, from this point, it sounds like this is a civil matter, if I'm understanding.
Because, I mean, the road has been open and everybody's been using it. But I feel sure, ma'am, that if the road is the biggest issue, that if the equipment does tear it up, which that is possible, I feel pretty confident that the church would fix that because they're not going to let the road just tear it to nothing and still, you know, not be able to get it. So, I don't think the road would be a church issue per se, but I understand, you know, what you're asking.
The carpenter's reasoning is they have access to their parcel of land, which is Mountain Berry Road. Why can't they not fix up Mountain Berry Road and use that to have access for them and their parishioners?
Well, see, there again, that goes back to the landowners. I mean, we're going to charge the roads. Like, all the private roads is up to us to get together. You're going to have people that ain't going to give these much, it's going to be raised. I mean, you have a lot of issues there that we can't answer here at this board.
It's not a civil matter between the property owners. And I understand the concerns that you are saying, but unfortunately, it's not, it's a matter that's outside of the realm of responsibility of this board.
Okay, do the property owners have the right to block off their portion of what they own, their road, the blacktop road?
Unfortunately, legally, we're not positioned, we can grant any type of, any concurrence or agreement. That's, again, that's a civil matter.
Okay.
We, that, that, unless we take it upon the property owners.
Right, okay.
All right. Ms. Hollis, do you have anything else?
Oh, no, that's it. That's it.
Thank you. Is Mrs. Hollis, yes, ma'am?
Oh, well, well... Okay, are you going to give an answer tonight?
Very possibly, yes.
Okay.
Very possibly, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, is there anyone else in the crowd who would like to vote, who would like to voice their concerns regarding the applicant, our application? Okay, I will consider that the second call. All right, going once, going twice, all right? Third call? Okay, all right. Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the record, we had one comment with concerns regarding the application. Gentlemen, any other comments you'd like to make at this moment before I move on to item seven? Okay? Item seven. Consider the land use application filed by Center Baptist Church Incorporated for property located at 109 Elrod Road, Helen, Georgia, 30545, to request a conditional use permit to expand non-conforming use. Gentlemen, if you have any thoughts, it's your pleasure. And before anyone says anything, Ms. Shanda, if I missed anything at this point, thank you.
Planning Commission heard this tonight. Their advisors suggested once to approve it.
That's correct, right.
Recommendation, planning board, was to approve the application as proceeded.
They heard the objection. Did they hear any objections or...
The only objections they heard were, was the letter, I believe, is in your package from Ms. Carpenter. There were no other objections at the meeting. They've worked on that for years.
Do I have the motion? Motion to approve the application, deny the application, or table the request?
I'll make the motion we approve. Recommendation, Kemp, planning board.
Okay, have a motion, Commissioner Bryant, approve the application filed by Center Baptist to expand permit to non-conforming use. Commissioner Goodger with a second. All right, we're now in discussion. Any discussion? All right, having on favor the motion, six, five, I say an aye. Folks say no, motion carries. Application, a request, has been approved. I do have a quick question. What do you guys plan on breaking great? That has nothing to do with it. I'm just... I promise you, this is not a setup. This is, I'm just, I'm excited for you, that's all.
It seems possible, but we realize that they are some, as you're aware of, some issues. We resolve those issues and we're ready to go.
Cool. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, John, if you want to, just stay up here.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to item eight. Let me say this, everyone, you're welcome to stay for those on each of these items we're going forward. But if you do need to excuse, just try and keep it on the down-low because, as you can tell, we've got some speakers going on. Item eight, conduct a public hearing for land use application filed by Mr. Michael Shore, Mr. Louis Fortner, three district property located at 10635 Duncan Bridge Road, Cleveland, Georgia, from a C1 community parcel district to a C2 highway business district. That's tax mapping parcel 090-11A is an apple. Total acres is 2.28 acres. Mr. Sell, you have the...
Okay, so I don't repeat everything you just said. Basically, we have an existing building on this property. It is currently doing agricultural sales, tractors and so forth, which is a very useful area. It's a permitted use in C2. So, the property owners are asking to rezone for that purpose. And the total acres again is 2.28 on that property. And again, the planning commission, there was no objection. The planning commission voted to recommend approval.
All right, any questions currently for Mr. Sell? All right, I know Mr. Shore's here. Is anyone else who's speaking on the after? Mr. Shore, how are you?
I'm all right.
Everything going good? All right.
My name's Michael Shore, I live in... Let me point this out, sorry. The address is wrong here, it's 10635, that's my home address.
Correct address is?
9606. Addressed property that we want to rezone.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Shore, live at 10635 Duncan Bridge Road, Cleveland, Georgia. It's already been said that we want to rezone this from C1 to C2 because there's an existing building with business in it that's not zoned for C1, but would like to be in compliance with it, so.
Any questions at this second? All right. Sure, thank you. All right, as we did a few minutes ago, same criteria, I'm going to open the floor up. Again, those in support, we'll offer three calls. Then we'll offer three calls for those who have concerns and/or could be opposed to the application. And we hereby start that now. If you're here in support, now's the time if you want to say something. I don't know how else to say it, but just say it that way. Again, not necessarily, we always have someone make any comments, so we're okay there. Okay. Second call? All right, third call, going once, going twice. Okay, Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the records, that we offered three calls for the, anyone to speak in support. And at this time, I'm going to open the floor. If you have any concerns regarding the application, please raise your hand. I'll get to you as quickly as possible as well. All right, second call? Normally, about this time, I'll ask if anyone has any clean jokes they'd like to share. But we haven't had anyone take this up on that offer. All right, third call, going once, going twice, all right? Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the record again, three calls, notakers? All right, so we hereby close the public, public hearing section of the corrected address of 9606 Duncan Bridge Road property. Close that portion. We now go into item nine, consider the land use application filed by Mr. Shore and Mr. Louis Fortner, three district property located at, again, 9606 Duncan Bridge Road, Cleveland, from C1 to C2. Gentlemen, you've heard the request. What's your opinion?
I'll move we approve, Chris.
Commissioner, motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Nick's second. I just have a comment. Mr. Sell, is this one of the items that we probably should have called when we, when the county instituted land use that we just didn't catch, or?
This was one that, it was a car repair shop, so it probably should have gone C2. But it's just one of those that, over time, it was a non-conforming use. Ag was very similar, but Mr. Shore wanted to get it to where it's permitted use.
I'm good with you, so I just wanted to make sure. We have found a few of these over the last couple of years that instead of a C1, it should have been a C2. Before I make any more comments, I've got a motion, second. I'll close discussion. All in favor of the motion, six, five, I say an aye.
All right.
Aye, or say no, motion carries. All right. Mr. Mr. Shore? Feel free to stay if you'd like. We're done, we're good, we're done.
No, I'm going to serve you a fresh drink.
Couldn't make a smart comment there, but I'm not going to. We've had enough of that this evening. Okay. All right. Item 10. Conduct public hearing for land use application filed by Mr. Gerald Sims, three district property located on Albert Reed Road from A1 agricultural forestry district to being C2 highway business district. That's tax mapping parcel 032-107. Total acres of 16.5 acres. Mr. Sell?
Okay, we do have an adjustment on the acres. We did have an amendment that it's only 5.19 acres. They're going to be redistricted from A1 to C2. That was on the applicant's part. Realized what's happened here is he's giving his daughter the acreage, 16.5 acres, but they only want 5.19, which is for an auto glass shop on the property. So, when he realized that he was going to have to take it all out of agriculture, he said, wait a second, can we amend that, go to a smaller size? So, we allowed him to do an amended. And I think you have the amended map in your package. If not, I've got copies here that you could look at. But basically, again, this is to allow for an existing building to be used for an autobass business. And the planning commission had a public hearing, there was no opposition, and they voted to recommend approval.
All right, okay. Any questions for Mr. Sell? All right. Thanks, John. Applicant, no. Come on down. And we do try to keep this as simple as possible. I hope folks are seeing, a lot of times, the folks come to these, you know, there's a perception when you come to a public hearing. We try to keep it as light as possible. So, just need to get your address for the record, if you...
My name's Renee Rayvan. My address is 845 Albert Reed Road, Cleveland, Georgia. And my son and I opened commercial glass, went on an auto class for commercial glass, do storefronts. And opened it in 2010, business really took off, and wanted even a bigger building. And we're wanting to use the... And we're wanting to use the thing that's already there, it's big enough for the additional warehouse space that we need, as well as some offices.
Any questions?
My only question was, I almost called Gerald when I seen the 16.5 acres and asked him to be sure about that.
That was wise, if you'd be able to rezone the entire tract, so. All right, any other questions?
That was one of those things, I thought we should have known that.
All right. We're good. Okay. Feel free to sit down, we'll go through that, same thing that Phil did. Okay. We're officially now in, we'll start the public hearing section. Again, three calls for support, three calls for those who are opposed or concerned, raise your hand, I'll get to you as quick as I can. And I know I sound so redundant up here, folks, I know that, but we have to, we have to do certain things. All right. Second call? Okay. Third call, anyone to, wanna speak in support? Once, twice? Okay, go. Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate the records, we offered three calls in support, now I'll open the floor for three calls who have concerns or could be opposed to the request. All right. Second call? I thought he was wanting to say something. Okay. All right. Third call? Once, twice, three times. Ms. Shanda, if you'll notate, we offered a call of in support and concerns and notakers. All right. So we'll hereby, unless you still have any other questions, we'll close the public hearing section. All right. Move on to item 11, consider the land use application filed by Mr. Gerald Sims to redistrict property located on Albert Reed Road from A1 agricultural forestry district to C2 highway business district, and again, that's going to be 5.19 acres, correct?
Right.
Came from C2, I'm sorry, A1 to C2. Now, gentlemen, have motion to approve, deny, or table?
Make a motion that we approve the request from A1 to A2, 9.19 acres.
5.19? Commissioner Goode, your first, do I have a second?
Sir.
Commissioner Nick, second, to approve the request, discussion with the board. All right. Have done in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Your approval. All right. Move on to item 12. Professor Renee, I forgot to tell the shores, thank y'all for your business, I'm not just gonna be located in White County, can stay in White County, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Item 12, consider response received, request proposal RFP, Rehonor Preserve Park Improvements Project. Mr. Kevin Hamby, our sponsor manager, you have the deal.
A couple of things coming up with this particular item, number one will be to award the contract for construction, which was brought about by selection committee. RFP process, selection committee met, reviewed the proposals, actually scored them, it was a qualifications-based scoring system, and the committee's recommendation is that it goes to Charles Black Construction, based on the best score of the proposal process. The second item that we're asking that the board ratify or approve is the budget, which encompasses the contract award too, but we've got an update here on the whole park, which I'd like to go through at this time, if possible. This is the total amount of funding available from SPOSS and the bond, this is the project budget allocation, you can see that the construction award of $3,698,149 is within budget, and that balances out with a little bit of contingency in case running the project does not, but as you can see, the project's well within budget, and everything's good with the award. The board so chooses to accept the recommendation.
Before I ask for a motion, Kevin, I have the committee's recommendations. Can I share with the, share with the crowd, kind of, your grading criteria, what you guys look at, of course, pricing's a component, but?
Pricing was a, was a somewhat of a component, but it wasn't the majority, by no means, it was more or less company background, local participation, qualifications, reference projects, experience in projects like this, that was the majority of the qualification space, price was a part of it, but, you know, by chance, I guess, or good, good fortune, Charles Black happened to be the best price and the best qualified, so therefore, that's their score was the highest of the proposals we received. And again, it was, it was a pretty detailed process that we followed, the RFP was advertised for an extended period, and there was a lot of information turned in by the due date, so pretty extensive process that was, that was taken on by the selection committee and everything else to evaluate these proposals, and the best, best company for this particular project of White County.
And for the record, and I'll ask it from the motion as well, but for the recommendation being Charles Black Construction graded out, and it's a top grade, but their bid came in $3,698,149. I do make that as a point of reference for the record.
181,000 lower than the next.
The second lowest price we bid was a scrooge and grizzle, it's $3,879,138. I won't go through.
That's close.
All right.
If I, if I can, can we flip to one more slide real quick with the presentation?
Yes.
I just want to draw your attention to the bottom line there, field is available spring in 2019, should be awarded for 39, that's potential timeline.
Should bring her.
Spring in 2019. Sports, sports start for everybody in March.
Didn't think so, I just went to make that.
I don't want to reference.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Gentlemen, this has been a lengthy process, for those in the audience, we've been going over this, goodness, nearly at least a year, I'll, I'll, about the expansion of our recreational facilities across the creek, at Yona Preserve. Gentlemen, I'll, do I have a motion to award the Yona Preserve recreational complex project to Charles Black in the amount of $3,698,149, and to authorize the chair to execute the necessary documents upon staff's review and contract.
I make a motion.
Commissioner Goode with a motion, second. Commissioner Halkum, second. In a little bit, I will have to ask for adoption of the project budget that was presented a few minutes ago, but we'll get to that in just a minute.
You could also say that this, I think this job, this job was talked about 20 years ago, so it's in a similar location with a similar type project.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Close the floor. Motion, the second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Folks say no, motion carries. And now, back to the budget, if you'll pop the budget back up there if you could. Mr. Hamby asked for, while we're in the process of adopting the budget, most of the budget has presented.
6C.
6C, $4,586,902. Mr. Bryant, first. Commissioner Goode, your second. Any discussion? All right. Have been done in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Now, I will say this, you know, now that we have awarded our contract, and anytime we're excited, a local company has an opportunity to continue to do business in the county, is, you know, these companies, like Charles Black Construction, they, they do this for a living, so if staff, if you guys, if they make any suggestions, ways potentially that we can have some value engineering or save some money, but as to say candidly, please bring those items before the board, and I'll, it'll be money we could use to enhance the project somewhere else, so.
That's right.
All right. I do say a special thank you to staff, Mr. Goode, Commissioner Halkum, thank you for taking your time out of your schedules to go through this grading process to help get us to this point. I know we had all have wanted this project to be done, we started last year, excuse me, last summer per se, but.
This one did?
Yep. So, we're, we're on our way, and I appreciate your time and all of your efforts, Mr. Hamby, thank you, Shanda, Jody, Mike, thank y'all. All right. Kevin, I think we're done with you. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, consider close or see for replacement of HVAC unit at the Moni Building. Commissioner Kemp, you have the director.
Hey, gentlemen. We have a 15-ton HVAC system down at the Moni Center that conditions the area and the accessories off the area. We solicited bids from five different companies, four of those give us bids, and one, one was unresponsive, so the neighbors did not respond. They did come out initially and look at, at the unit, but they did not submit a bid, so we've got four, four bids from, from the other four companies. I do need to say that absolute climate control, or their state license is a restricted license. That means that any unit over 175,000 BTUs, they are not licensed to install. This is 180,000 BTU, so, that would be, and he was the low bid, but he is not licensed by the state to install an unit that large. Now, that does not mean he could not, that he's not capable of installing, here's the problem, if he installs that unit and something happens to it, the warranty is void immediately. That'd be a consideration in these other bids.
He know that?
I'm sure he does, but I, I don't know.
So you're talking about 175,000 BTU versus 180,000, is that, is that credible, 5,000 BTU difference, or is that just what we're replacing?
Well, that's, that's what's there now, and that's why we want to go back with it.
So compared apples to apples is what you're attempting to do here?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, exactly, and that's another, that's another point, too. He, I asked for quotes on carrier system, and he quoted a train system, so he didn't quote what the other three quoted.
So the other ones are carriers?
They're all carrier units. And, and the reason I chose carrier, the unit that's there now, if we get the service out of the, the new one that we cut out of that one, that's 29 years old, that's, that's unheard of on a BTR station. It's a, it's a regional to the building.
Do you have a recommendation?
I, I would recommend going with Kathy Heating and Air. They are, A&amp;E Electric, Southern Air, Kathy Heating and Air Complete Comfort are all non-restricted licenses with the state. And we'd be asking for funding out of SPOSS to do this replacement.
I don't have a problem with that, there's only $1,500 difference in those two prices, right?
I think that, basically, we just, we couldn't consider absolute climate control for cause of the restriction there, I mean, we ran into that other similar situation.
$167.
So I think that their, their bid would just be void anyway.
And I did ask Jason to quote carrier even after we received the initial train quote, and he, he didn't respond.
But he may not be a carrier.
He may not be, he may be a train dealer, right.
Actually, I think he is a full-time train dealer, so they're gonna quote what they're, they get the best deal.
And that may be the reason Eric never responded as well, I'm, I'm not sure.
Can I clear out one, Jason, would be state certified?
He, he is state certified, he's just got a restricted license. He, he is state certified, but he, he only has a restricted, restricted license.
Why is that, why is that, what's the difference?
I've never heard this come up.
He, he is basi, yeah, he's basically a residential, he's got a residential.
The license is not for commercial license?
Anything, anything under 10 ton or under, he can, he can do commercial, but, and he does a great job, he, he does a wonderful job, he's done some jobs, jobs for the county, but, that's just, I just wanted to make y'all aware of that, you know.
If there ever was an issue, well, the circumstances, what they are, Jason will understand.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'd make a motion that we accept Kathy Heating and Air contract for $15,150 to be taken out of SPOSS.
All right. Motion, Commissioner Goode, to award the contract to Kathy Heating and Air, $15,150 carrier unit, funded out of SPOSS, 2014 SPOSS. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Have it in on favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Folks say no, motion carries. Thanks, Kevin. Everything's going well?
Yes.
Going down.
Everything, if you have more.
You mentioned that about, it was gonna take it out of 2014 SPOSS, I'd like to say that, I think that if we look at the commitment that we have on the park drive that we just passed, that that balance of the O8 SPOSS is going to be, is, is available to that, I think it's in the, I think that's, I think that's the number that he has in there.
O8? Okay. Do I need to ask for minimum motions, or are we okay? Okay, well, let's just for more clarification. Commissioner Goode, you're.
That, that SPOSS funding available up there, that 586,962 was probably coming out of the O8 SPOSS.
That is, that is the, that will wipe out the O8 SPOSS.
Okay.
Funding is the bonds and the O8 SPOSS.
I understand, but I referenced 14.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. That's where we need to take it out of, not the O8. Did I reference the O8 to 14?
Dan, you did.
Okay, so, I'm good?
I'm good.
Okay.
We're good.
I thought you were saying that we're supposed to do the O8, I'm, I'm trying to do math on that.
No, no, I was just saying that you, you asked whether, on this project, whether we're gonna do the air conditioning out of 2014 SPOSS, and I said, well, that's the only one we have left, because the other ones, basically, just.
All right, we're good. This is one more call. All right, we're all on.
Free discussion.
Ms. Jody? You got the deal on the finances?
Thank you, sir. This will be the financial status report for January 2018. The revenues for January were $1,090,468, expenditures, $1,348,693. As you see at the bottom of the slide, that's 78% of our budgeted revenues we've collected, and we've spent 56 of the budgeted expenditures. For the seven months of FY18, we have collected a total of $85,200. two hundred and twenty-five dollars in alcohol taxes and fees, and that is seventy-four percent received. For the month of January, we collected seventy-six thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars for title, um, admin warum tax, the tabit tax, and that gives us a yearly, um, budget total of four hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars, and that puts us at sixty-four percent collected on our budgeted amount. Our lost amount for January is two hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. That gives us a budget year total of one million five hundred eighty thousand dollars and two hundred and seventy-seven dollars in worth, and that puts us at sixty-eight percent of budgeted amount. Our hotel motel tax received in January was eighty-two thousand three hundred forty-three dollars. That puts us at a yearly total of six hundred four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, which is eighty-six percent received of our budgeted amount. Our SPOS amount for January was three hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and one dollars. Um, and as you can see at the bottom of the slide, where we have it divided out for the admin fee and the CD and portions, and our county portion, but we were left with a hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars that was available, available to county project fund. And we also received the February numbers today, so we went ahead and included a slide on that. The February numbers, um, three hundred seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars, that is down a little bit from what the past few months have been, however, that is still twenty-three thousand dollars above what was received in February of twenty seventeen. And so out of the February funds, um, one hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred eight dollars is available for the county project fund. And the next slide just gets a history of this lost. And the next slide just, um, is for the separate funds, as you can see that on solid waste, forty-seven percent of their budget is spent, nine-one-one, fifty-six percent, the drug task force is fifty-four percent, and Anoda is at forty-two percent.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Dugg? Thank you, Ms. Jody, thank you. Mr. Milton? Any comments, good of the cause?
No, sir, I'm excited to answer any questions before having...
Well, I do want to say that, uh, in my records, Mr. Biggers, uh, uh, Mr. Biggers' concerns regarding Tom Bell Road, um, I know the board has already approved the road list of two thousand eighteen, but could you come back and let us know, if Mr. Biggers made no off his head, what year did the county last pave that road? Mr. Biggers, do you remember? All right, Mike, would you, uh, let us know, uh, Ken, would you share with him that we're going to get the staff to bring back some information to us regarding Tom Bell Road?
Sure.
Tom, Mike, if you'll, email us out that information regarding, uh, Tom Bell Road, out of respect to Mr. Biggers, and, um, kind of give us a, a basis of, or spacture information.
I will do that.
Okay, all right, got it. All right, uh, upcoming announcements, um, I saw the chambers already left, uh, nor- normally the chamber has something they want to... Understood. Public announcements, I'll open the floor up for an opportunity, and one, uh, any comments good of the cause? It's ma'am.
Okay, I don't know how, my name's Tina Couch, I work for the White County Sheriff's Department, and I don't know how this works, but I know that I've heard you guys open up the floor with all the other things, but when the sheriff was up here, we didn't get a chance to, I didn't know if the floors just not open up for the sheriff's department, is that, or is the floor open up to hear anybody?
It is right now, yes.
Do you care if I say something?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
My name's Tina Couch, and my address is twelve ninety-five Camp One Seeger Road in New Noggin, Georgia. I've worked for the sheriff's department for over thirteen years. I've became a deputy in nineteen ninety in Hall County. Um, I love working for the sheriff's department, I love who I work with, I feel like everybody I work with is dedicated. We are not trying to get rich, and I just wanted you to see a face, and maybe a story. Um, we, some of us are barely making it. Um, I can tell you from experience that my husband last year had, had, um, nerve damage, and, um, uh, we, I have family insurance, and we have good insurance, but it's not cheap, and it comes off of every two weeks, we get paid, and it comes over a hundred and one dollars, comes out of my check every two weeks, and then we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. The hospital won't even touch you. My husband needed an MRI, and he needed injections, and we didn't have twenty-five hundred dollars that we could pull out. We live paycheck to paycheck, and I'm, I have a daughter just finishing college and two more children, and I'm fifty-one years old. And, but we have to have insurance, don't we? We all have to have insurance, and the only thing that's got us through is prayers and believing that Jesus had taken care of us. We are not trying to get rich, I love the sheriff's department, I come to work this morning just thinking how grateful blessed I am to come to a job and to see people and help people. I can't, I'm not too mild-honed, but I can't tell you how many people we help on a daily basis. Our sheriff is honest, he's got integrity. Do we agree, all of us? No, but that's what makes us human, right? But he's a good man, and he fights for us, and doesn't mean, mean to be disrespectful, he's passionate, just so are we, or we wouldn't be sitting in here. I just wanted you to know, to have a face, to, and a story, that if we get a two dollar raise an hour for me and my husband and the medicine, that is still very high. It will be life-changing. It will help our family, it will be life-changing. Right now, I clean offices on the weekends, and I'm a deputy sheriff, and I'm proud to be a deputy sheriff, I love it, I'm in it to help people, not to get rich, but at the same time, we need a raise. I don't know who else can help except you, you five right there, you'll make the decision, won't you? And I believe every one of you are God-fearing people. I believe that you pray and that you seek Jesus, just like we all do, but I'm telling you, we are losing good people. I have to clean offices in Gainesville on the weekends just to make extra money, just to try to help my family. I know people that I work with at the sheriff's department is getting their, their electricity cut off, that is trying to ask their family for help. I'm try, I'm not trying to beg for money, because we earn it, we earn that money, but at the same time, I wanted you to have a face to the story, that we're just not trying to get extra money. We need a raise, we're losing good people, we're losing seasoned people, because if it comes down to it, the deputy just told me the other day, I love working for White County, I love my sheriff's department, but I have children to feed, I can't do it on fifteen fifty, I can't do it on sixteen dollars. Please consider, please consider, that these are the faces, these are the stories, it's just not the sheriff standing up here, I just wanted you to see a face, I feel led, I feel led, I sat there and prayed, and I feel led to tell you that, whether it makes a difference or not, we appreciate the work you do, but I just hope you take a minute to realize there's families and stories behind asking, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, ladies and gentlemen, our board has a, uh, matter to go into executive session, um, I appreciate your time, um... I, I believe this board will be very prayerful in the decisions that's going to be coming up, I feel like very soon.
Thank you.
I can say that personally. All right, do I have a motion to enter executive session? Mr. Hockham first. Mr. Bryant second. All in favor? If I say no, motion carries, thank you. Thank you.